Thank you all for coming. If you're able, please stand and pledge allegiance to the public. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due justice. Thank you very much. Welcome to the last regular Massillon Town Council meeting of the year. Probably the last meeting of the year. Not forever. We'll be back next year unless something bad happens. We typically start our meetings in the public comment session, 15-minute public comment period. Anyone's allowed to address the board on anything, any topic within reason, of course. We have a few rules. We ask that you keep your, if you have something to say, stand and state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes, and only comment once within the 15-minute public comment period. So, anybody have anything to say in the public comment period? Okay, no takeaways, it sounds like. We will then proceed with the agenda. First item to update is the Massillon Memorial Hospital update. Mr. Rollins is here from the hospital. Bob, a friendly go over to you.
Good evening. Some of you were at our board meeting this past week, so some of us will be repetitious. In fact, Mr. O'Shaughnessy might be able to actually, he might be able to channel through Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
I was gonna say, I might be able to remember some.
So, just a couple of items as an update. We just finished the month of November, and we had another positive operating gain that was driven by admissions, medical surgical admissions, which were slightly more than last year in November. We still do have a weakness in our obstetrics program, and that's primarily because we, most of the year, we've only had one obstetrician. We do have a new obstetrician who started three months ago, Dr. Jeff Greenberg. I just met with him today. In his practice, his office practice is building, so I expect in the next six to eight months, our obstetrical volume will come back somewhat. In terms of finances, we ended, as I said, the month on a positive gain. Year-to-date, we're ahead of our budget gain and ahead of last year by quite a bit. So, through November, our operating gain is $1.1 million. We have budgeted a gain of $900,000, and last year at this time, we were, we had a very slight gain of $41,000. So, there's a lot going on, and it's been a reasonably good year. December is always a difficult month to predict. For instance, the past several days, we've had as few as five patients in the hospital total. Today, we have seven. So, it's gonna be hard to anticipate what December...
It's the holidays, everybody's having a sick month.
Well, I've been in other towns where around the holidays, everybody comes in and gets their elective surgical procedure done, and people do get sick. And I noticed your counselor is ill, and just a word of warning, there is a lot of flu. So, if you didn't get your flu shot, stay out of crowds, don't shake anybody's hands, wash your hands after you shake them. You know, it's the same rules. So, but December, we'll see how December works out. I do want to comment on a couple of new doctors. Part of our November results are reflective of the fact that we have a new cardiologist doctor, Denier. That's through an arrangement with the UVM Health Network. She's just a joy to work with, and our cardiology office practice is up about 8%. And also, our medical group, I just met with our two new family practice physicians, Dr. Beretto and Dr. Prianos. Their practice is building. They started with us in August, and likewise, I think they're gonna be very successful here. And our surgical group volume is up almost 5%, and that's reflective of the fact that we recruited Dr. Dalkeet Facy earlier this year, and Dr. Facy has, his practice has built and continues to build. So, we spent a lot of time and energy on trying to restock physicians, and I gave a report to our employees last week. If you include the physicians we've hired and the new physicians in our contract groups, we have, this year, brought on close to 18 new physicians. So, that's quite a feat. Takes a lot of effort. We are currently in the hunt, as I say, for ENT surgeon and orthopedic surgeon, and we believe we're gonna have some good news on both of those recruits in the next month or month and a half. And we have aggressive plans for next year, including some more subspecialists. So, we're very active in recruiting physicians so we can provide the services this community requires. Let me talk about three things specifically the council may be interested in related to conversion, but before I do that, let me also just step back a minute and talk about the things we're concerned about. You've seen the news stories about the Medicare clawback. That's money that Medicare paid the hospital for what's called the low-volume adjustment over three years, 10, 11, and 13, I'm sorry, 11, 12, and 14, which totaled about $4 million of Medicare revenue, and now Medicare's come along and asked for $1.6 million of it back. So, we already spent the money, and now they want $1.6 million back. They've done this to 15 other hospitals in New York State and several hospitals in Maine. It's, we've been very public about it. We're not the only ox who's getting gored, but this is the kind of thing that happens all the time and makes it difficult to predict your financial results. And then, more troublesome are things that could happen at the federal level. Two things specifically, there's two pieces of legislation that expire in 2017. One is the sole community provider designation. That's a federal designation. That law expires, as I said, in 2017. It has to be renewed. If it's not renewed, there's a likelihood that $4 million of our revenue will disappear overnight because of the sole community provider where we benefit from an increased Medicare revenue. And likewise, there's a piece of legislation that's called the 340B program. This is a program that was instituted several years ago to assist hospitals in buying high-cost drugs. We got a, we got a discount through that program. That totals $1.5 million to us. That legislation has to be renewed next, next year as well. If it's not renewed, if either, if those two are not renewed, $6 million comes out of our revenue stream. I don't know whether it's gonna be renewed or not. Your guess is as good as mine. The tea leaves don't look too good because the incoming administration, I think at least publicly has said they want to cut the budget. They want to cut this, they want to cut that. Whether or not they're able to do that, I don't know. So, while we've done well this year, we're always mindful that the upcoming year and future years can continue to be challenging. So, that's my cry wolf here. Now, let me talk about the conversion. We did reach a bit of a milestone in that the state did approve our application to establish the nonprofit corporation. That was done on December 8th. So, we now are moving along the road to filing the IRS tax forms, and that will take us six to eight months. Once the IRS recognizes the corporation, then we will actually ask the Department of Health to transfer the license to the new nonprofit corporation. And so, that's probably not gonna happen until the end of summer, early next fall. At the same time, we know we have the asset transfer agreement process that has, we have to get moving on that, and that's a negotiation. And I expect that you, as counselors, will be involved in that over the next several months. I know our, our law firm has talked to your attorney, at least in a very preliminary way, and I expect that over the next month or so, those conversations probably will become much more substantive. So, we're anxious to get through that process. Final, two things I'd point out, the bond repayment, $5.8 million, is essentially done. The checks were cut by the state to the escrow agent on 12/15, so there's $5.8 million in state money that's sitting in an escrow account, and by the bond contracts, that's to sit there for 30 days, so it'll be, they'll actually pay the bonds off January 15th. So, then the long-term debt will be expunged. And the final item is affiliation. The Board of Managers has whittled down the potential affiliate institutions to two, and there's a subgroup of the board that is making site visits. We had a site visit last week. Four board members went to visit one of the locations. It's one of the institutions that's affiliated with the big system, one of the two we're talking to, and we'll have another site visit to a different affiliate on the western part of the state, January 5th. So, my hope is that after these site visits are done, that by the end of January, the board will make a decision and focus in on one large system with which we will then have, hopefully, some fairly substantive conversations about how the affiliation relationship might work. So, we've still got a lot of work to do there. So, December normally is a quiet month in hospitals, but we have a lot going on. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a name for the new co yet, the new company, the new corporation?
No, we're still working, we, we, we're still working with NewCo. We don't have any name.
And do you have to have, when you go to the IRS, do you have to have a name?
There, I believe the answer to that is yes. So, I don't have the answer yet, what the name's gonna be. It's likely to be NewCo, MMH, it might still be MMH. The board's had some, the board's had some conversation about names, but that was back in October, so we really haven't come back to that. So, we will eventually have to have a name. Right now, we're using NewCo and MMH interchangeably.
Okay.
Any truth to the rumor Joe Graves buying up all the Massillon Memorial Hospital coffee cups so that it'll be worth something?
Yeah. Joe's gonna solve it even.
I have five in my credence. I use them, but I know...
I don't have any.
But I warn you, I don't wash them. After I use them, I just stick them up there, and then I pour another cup of coffee in. So, they could be a little grungy, but I could make a deal for you.
Unrelated to that, there is some funds on the unclaimed funds on the comptroller's site that belong to the hospital. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them, actually.
Right.
Is that something you're planning on claiming, or is it miniscule that it's not worth?
It's, it's, in terms of our total operation, it's relatively small. We do intend on claiming them, but it's relatively small dollar number. I think it's $75,000. I mean, it's significant, so we intend to claim it.
Oh, thanks, Joe. Actually, you have something there, too, Joe, from BJ's, unclaimed.
I do?
Yeah.
Holy cow.
Yep. No, it's gonna fall there for a department, too.
Did I?
Yeah. So, I guess, otherwise, if you might have some money out there, get on the unclaimed funds for the comptroller's office and see what you have out there.
$575K?
Maybe. I don't know.
Holy cats.
Could be.
I don't remember shopping on that to BJ's. Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay. Discussion of the Time Order Charter cable franchise. We received, we have been in the process of negotiating a franchise, well, negotiating is kind of a weak term for what's happening. Trying to get a new franchise agreement with Time Warner. We have been, I think, two years without one, and we engaged a law firm to do that for us. They represented us through this process. They told us, yes, we've got a new agreement. We really have very little power in this whole process. The main thing that we've been doing through the process is an audit of past payments to the town for franchisees to make sure we've received all the franchise payments we should have received. They're still finishing up that audit, but they came to us with a final agreement. We agreed to do the franchise for five years. The agreement was negotiated as a 10-year agreement. Time Order Charter is saying, no, that was unilateral change. We don't, we don't accept five years. Our attorney would like us to reconsider and backtrack and rescind the five-year franchise agreement and proceed with a 10-year franchise agreement. It doesn't change much. I think, you know, our thought was that we do five years because there's so much that's in transition, but this is an exclusive agreement through Time Warner anyway. I mean, other companies come and compete. We see a lot of suddenly issues in the village and the town, so it doesn't stop anybody from going with something other than Time Warner. So, I wanted, I made you aware of this in an email. I wanted to have a discussion here and see what your thoughts are, and what your thoughts are on changing our stance to go with a 10-year agreement.
I'm uncomfortable with a 10-year agreement, however, as you say, it is non-exclusive. And the customer still has a range of options, but with the technology changing the way it is, the ownership, these things change the way they do. 10 years is a long time.
I think in 10 years, cable will be obsolete. I mean, we're seeing now Roku and all these other different things, and people can find television. I don't know how much water cable's gonna be pertinent anywhere, but...
Can you have more than one agreement with more than one company, or is it just...
Yeah, because this isn't exclusive, so certainly somebody else wanted to come in and provide cable, we certainly can have two, yeah. Which I would love. I'd love that option. Very little competition with cable in this region, New York State. Very low. So, I think the, what the attorney, I think, is basically saying is that they're gonna have to go back and totally renegotiate, try to get a five, they have to agree to a five-year. He doesn't think they will agree to a five-year.
So, what happens if they don't?
We just wanna have a franchise agreement.
Should we know anything?
Right, now we don't know.
This has been ongoing, I think, for how many years? A long time?
Long time. Sure, it's expired, I don't know, a year ago, quite a while ago.
I think we've done day-to-day, year-to-year, with no franchise, day-to-day with one, year-to-year with another, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we did one year or a couple times, I think.
So, what's in this event, you're not proof of this?
I don't think we'll ever settle the, ever resolve the franchise fee and their possible underpayment. I only throw the money coming forward for underpayment of franchise fees. I think the settlement of that portion is contingent upon a franchise agreement.
At one point in time, we were, probably still are entitled to, to monies from the franchise agreement. However, at one time, if we took that, then they'd place that on the customer.
If we increase...
Customer or the burden of that.
We are right now getting a franchise.
Yes, we are.
Right.
So, if I not agree to that, are we not getting that?
No, no, we'll still get it. They, in terms of the old franchise agreement, it's staying in place.
All right.
And that's why they continue to pay us. What we won't get is any money that the audit, if the audit shows we are due money for underpayment in the past, I don't, I think that'll, that's bundled in with it. They'll pay that. They'll agree to pay, they'll agree that they underpaid us, and they'll pay it if we agree to the franchise.
And who determines that, that they're paying us?
They, our, our law firm is working on that right now.
We're having an audit now.
Yeah, they're, they're doing an audit, yeah. The law firms are doing it.
I forget if there are any idea of how much it's worth.
Well, we engaged them for about $12,500, the law firm. They were confident they would recover more than what they cost us.
So, as we go on with this, the law firm's bill is gonna increase above that $12,500, or are we losing money by holding on for it?
Is that the total?
I do not, but every time they, they need more money, they have to come back and propose another agreement.
Right.
So, whatever we refund, that's it at this point.
Right, right. The $12,500, yeah. I think it was, that's the right figure, right?
It sounds right.
Yeah.
And they're, they recommend that we do that then?
Yes, yes. That's the lawyer's recommendation, and we use the same here. Look, I don't like Time Warner. I make no bones about it. I think they're bully, and I think they make us buy things we don't want. I think we pay more than we should. But, quite frankly, the franchise agreement really has no power either way. It's a piece of paper. So, I don't worry a whole lot about extending it to 10 years. We're, we'll get, we may be criticized. People don't like it. I wanted to do another 10-year deal, but it doesn't change anything because it's not exclusive. Anybody else can, if there's ever going to be competition, it certainly can still happen. I don't see where we hurt anybody by doing a 10-year agreement. So, I would entertain a notion to, if someone's willing to rescind our previous support for a five-year franchise, to change it to a 10-year franchise and to move forward with move forward with a ten-year franchise agreement with Time Warner slash Charter.
So ten years going forward, or ten years including the previous?
It'll be retroactive, I think.
Okay. Seventy years or whatever.
Right. So, anyone wanna make that motion?
I will.
Okay, I'm gonna do a second. I'll second it, someone else will. Okay, uh, we've had a fair amount of discussion.
I'm just getting nervous when you have to second mine.
As do I. Uh, we've had a discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, abstention. Oh, one opposed, okay, any abstentions? Alright, very good. We also have in our packet, uh, a number of Tom, uh, meeting, Tom Board meeting, Town Council meeting minutes from a period of March through, uh, the end of, uh, November, need a resolution to approve those, so, second.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? I've talked to fantasy if he might be able to change some of the way we do our agendas as far as timing, but also maybe we could also work on something different with it, so you can get the minutes turned a little quicker too. Yeah, I know you, you're still, yeah, yeah, okay.
Just to get you all caught up, basically, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution to close the town credit card accounts at KeyBank and open, uh, new accounts at, uh, MBT Bank beginning January one of twenty seventeen.
So move, second.
Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yeah, discussion here, no.
Oh, yeah, I'm very excited.
I just wonder why, I guess, for me.
Why are we making the switch? The rationale has been that we do the bulk of our banking on MBT, I believe, um, and what else did I forget?
There's just been too many difficulties with the new business, and things just aren't getting done, and...
I mean, so the hope is that MBT will be a little more attentive.
There's more in mind.
They are.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution to replace the town posted machine in the town clerk's office, it's ten years old, uh, at least expires in February twenty seventeen. A company called NeoPost recommended it be replaced every four to five years, so we're behind. The current loan payment is a hundred and four dollars and fifty-three cents, new payment will be a hundred and nine dollars and forty-eight cents for sixty-three months.
So move, second.
Motion to second, discussion.
We're gonna pay that like for ten years, the previous one?
Yeah, it's a round home thing, yeah. Um, any, uh, any other, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, abstention, motion carries. Resolution to renew the court officer agreement of the Village of Ascena, at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars, expiring twelve thirty-one, uh, two thousand sixteen, will that be?
Well, it's just expiring this year.
That's expiring, and okay, authorized, you probably decide the same, so it's to renew it for a year, right? For twelve thirty-one seventeen. Okay, is there a motion?
I'm gonna abstain from that, that's, I believe, uh, if I'm the only member that's involved in the show movement.
Second. Motion to second, uh, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, resolution to accept or respect or reject the Northern Authority of the State of New York grant for the purchase installation of a, uh, handicap lift at the Ascena Public Library, project number, project nineteen number eight four two seven, amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, authorized to provide to assign all documents. If you remember, Senator Griffo came up and made an offer that he would, he was able to, uh, find some funding through the Northern Authority to replace the broken wheelchair lift at the library, and, uh, the paperwork arrived yesterday. You have a motion to accept that?
So move. Second.
Motion to second, discussion. No? Okay, well, uh, all over. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, abstention, motion carries. We also need to set the annual reorganization meeting, uh, we're proposing that we use a Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month typically is, for the new year, which would be January fourth at five thirty P.M.
So move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion to second, discussion, everybody knows where this is about, right? What we do to make the appointments and all that kind of stuff?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Did I say five? Five thirty. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, abstention, motion carries. We have, uh, bills, we have the transfers?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the transfers and amendments that are in your bag.
So move.
Do a second.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion, uh, just, uh, some, a number of these are as usual, are housekeeping, transfers of one account to the others, the other things, um, nothing out of your ordinary, right?
We're closing a bunch of accounts, I've seen them, um, they were, they were considered off, so...
Okay, those are all the ones we're closing, alright. Uh, any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, abstention, motion carries. Uh, we also need to pay the bills, warrant number twelve.
So move.
Motion to second, is audited by Councilman Nicola Miller, wanna make sure they get credit.
Yeah.
And he said he'll be willing to do it for the next ten years.
Absolutely not.
Miller wants out, you believe it? Uh, all in favor of paying our bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, abstention, motion carries. Okay, uh, committee reports.
Joe, we're gonna, um, reappoint any of the positions that are expiring twelve thirty-one, or we do that in the organization?
We'll do those anyway, yeah, we just, the chambers include those, if you're aware of them.
I reached out to quite a few of them actually, and, uh, I guess I'll just send an email out to the ones I reached out to, and that way we're not, you know, everybody's our contact.
Yeah, make sure everybody's interested, yeah.
Make sure, see, just like this, several, okay, while we get together, we'll prepare our notes.
Good, okay, that's the way it's supposed to work. Okay, uh, committee reports, Airport and Highway, thank you, but I'm quiet, what do you got for us?
I'm trying to keep quiet.
Go ahead.
Uh, obviously, winter is different than the last couple of years, uh, we've, so far this year, same time period from November, December to the date, we've actually worked eighty-three more hours of overtime, we've turned wheels, we've turned our wheels nine more times compared to last year, we were out nine more times, and we've already doubled our usage in salt, and we've already spent twenty-six thousand dollars more for salt than we did last year.
At this time, okay.
Uh, the airport, um, I mean, as far as the airport, as far as what we do, everything's fine there, Cape Air struggled this week, uh, obviously, the weather, there's a weather issue on Monday with the freezing rain, but, uh, at one point, they had three planes there on Tuesday, trying to get one of them to fly, so.
Is that something that one of you guys? Yeah, that's it?
Yep.
Questions, bud?
At the regular meeting, the board of managers on December twelfth, and Sean Murphy reported that he was elected president of the MBEU for a year, and the second vice chairman pulled out at the last minutes of his vacant, and the other officers carried over. Uh, they had been looking at some security upgrades to improve their accessibility or their logging for their drug room, they keep all their supplies, and also, they're looking at upgrading the, uh, all of exterior doors and the doors to the officers' office. They're also looking at installing some CCTV closer around exterior. And that's it for open session.
Have you heard any, have you seen the plans at all, Frank, have you?
Nope.
I've heard about the, I've not seen.
Well, remember, they, they gave me the whole package, and I talked to you about it, and you said that you wanted them to come meet with you first.
Right, right.
He called me again, wanted to know what I thought, I said you need to meet with Joe first.
Okay, I'm not, okay.
It was, it was quite a chunk of money.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um...
They, oh boy.
It had to be, the job would have to be bad.
Yeah, I don't know about that. They want closer, get, well, I'll talk about it.
They want to upgrade their whole security system.
I understand that, I'm, you know, it's, want, need sometimes are different, but...
Well, they wanna go to a card reader type system, so they would be able to log who came in when, et cetera.
Okay. I'm looking forward to seeing it. Um, hospitals next, I couldn't make the meeting one day.
I made the meeting, and I had, um, Mr. Wolvin explain everything that went on.
And it was, and it was alley foot?
It was alley foot.
Okay, good, I see. Uh, MED?
MEDs, uh, at the meeting last week, a resolution came up, uh, submission of an application for two thousand sixteen zero emission vehicle infrastructure municipal rebate, rebate grant funding. What that all means is they're looking to, the DEC is looking to install an electric vehicle changing station.
Charging.
Charging station. This is an eighty, twenty percent, DEC is twenty percent, MED is twenty percent, eighty percent, twenty percent, and MED's contribution is mostly support and materials. Okay, the partnering agency will be the village for this reason. If the town becomes the lead agency in this, we, as a town, are subject to a PSC permission, the village is not. Okay, no money changes hands, so it would be in the municipal parking lot, simply because it's larger than our parking lot. Our parking lot could not accept this.
So it's in a lot of back.
It would be in a lot of back for that reason, and MED accepted this.
Okay. You know what? And I've never asked any about this, there was, there was a bunch of grants for electric vehicles for municipal or every kind of vehicle, and it's always struck me as odd that they don't have electric vehicles, quite honestly, and I don't think Seattle Gas has any natural gas vehicles here in town either, which strikes me as odd, but, so, maybe, you could ask the question, if MED, would it make sense for them to look at having some electric vehicles? Obviously, I don't think that the lime trucks can be electric, but, um, if they have smaller vehicles, at some point, does it make sense for them to transition those over to electric?
I'll ask, Andy.
Okay, any, anything else for MED library?
Uh, quite a bit of it was executive session, we talked about that after, um, our regular meeting here, um, they were on pursuit with an energy audit, um, I've asked them to look at the MED energy audit, but they have somebody from the libraries to come in and do it for free as well, so, let them have a go at it, and we can go from there. One thing I, was kinda interesting is, uh, with their business side, they're gonna have a video to CD type machine, I guess, so if you have videos, you can convert them to CDs, which will be another service at the library. That's about, uh...
Frank, can we, um, I, we need to check into it, I think, once we sign these documents with the Northern Authority, we can kinda get started on the lift, the elevator, so, um, but we need to make sure, and, you know, and what the senator told us was that, once we sign the document with DASNY, we can, as to start the work, and then we would get reimbursed, but if we started work before signing, they agree that we wouldn't get reimbursed, so, I think it would just make sense for us to start, so we'll double check on that, um, and get started on that, just get that ball rolling.
I'll, I'll, like, what we talked about, Joe, was obviously CNS.
Sure.
Would, uh, including, it would be part of that cost, um, they would put their package together for us to put out to, uh, for bid, and, uh, they would help us with some of the engineering side of it, and we can get started.
Good.
So I just gotta make sure that it's all approved.
Yeah, okay. Museum? Anything there?
They had their dinner meeting at the club, you know, seven or eight, I went to.
Okay.
I did, um, just a little follow-up on the building at two hundred East Doris Street, still...
We, we've had one offer, um, from the last I knew, we were waiting for confirmation of financing for the, from the offer?
Exactly.
And we haven't already backed it?
That was one of the, the items that we, as a counterback, was that there would be a thing, approval.
Right.
They're working on that, and in the meantime, we have a real estate agency continuing to show.
Good. Recreation?
Recreation's fine, they have revenues are up considerably, the winter season is in full swing.
BBC?
Uh, you know, I sent out the email with a list of items that, uh, they've been working on, some of our competence, some of them, not so much, but, uh, they got pretty much well covered, uh, new slate of officers, uh, um, actually, Paul Rupes is gonna take over as chairman, and Ron Bechov is the vice chair.
Oh, nice, okay. Chamber of Commerce, uh, I was at the board director's meeting last week, there's a lot going on, they can tell you they're keeping it pretty busy, um, there, uh, soon be the annual luncheon, uh, they can finish the annual dinner as well, that'll be more toward spring, uh, the, uh, they've formed a bunch of new committees, we're trying to get some new ideas, just to kinda revitalize the chamber a little bit, and get more people involved to the extent they can, and generate a little more revenue for them, so. Talking, and one of the committees that I'm on, that I'm excited about is the new event committee, try to focus on new events, and, I think you'd like to retire some of the events, the events that maybe, uh, are a lot of effort, um, but are just, are old and aren't really generating much, you know, in the way of income for them, or as far as the community's concerned, so, um, I'm looking forward to what may come out of that. So, that's all, I have, we have the committee reports, I think, we do need an executive session on a couple different items, um, one, I believe, is, uh, a contract, uh, two of them are contract related, so, another one is, actually, three of them are contract related, so, there's some contracts we're negotiating, not labor contracts, but agreements that outside these. So I would entertain a motion to move to executive session, and we won't forget, we have all the comments, so, but let's, yeah, we'll leave all the comments, same rules as before, fifteen minute, all the comment period, if you've got something to say, just stand up and tell us where you are, where you live. Okay?
Just, oh, quick question.
Sure.
When you mentioned the twelve thousand five hundred during the franchise agreement discussion, was that what you're paying for the attorney, or is that what they're paying you per the, per the old agreement?
No, that is the, uh, what we're paying you, we're paying the attorney during this negotiating auditing session, so we're paying them. They came to us, Andy, a few years ago, and said, hey, we can help you negotiate your agreement with Time Warner, we, this is, these are their words, they had found in previous analyses that Time Warner had underpaid a number of franchise agreements, and we think that applies to Ascena, and we'd like to represent, we're negotiating to see if we can recover some money that they have been underpaying, and they, the sales pitch to us was that they will recover more than what the contract costs, so.
Who's the offer?
Uh, my child. Yeah, uh, so, yes, Cole Loggins, about in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania based, um, we have a contract with him, a couple years... We had a contract with them a couple of years ago now.
Okay, those all have, thank you.
Anything else with the meeting? Alright, please, Bob, obviously, we can leave. Okay, you can both go to executive session, like Bob was discussing earlier. Gentlemen, you can both go to executive session.
So.
Your second.
Second.
I wasn't sure, I was going to say aye.
It's the end of the year. It's the end of the year.
Action afterward, Joe?
I don't disagree.